I'm getting a lot of feedback out of myself. Okay. You know, they can. They point in a hand. Got any idea what's going on? We'll test it. Yep. Remember that button. Okay, I'd like to open up tonight under a public hearing the annual appropriations ordinance for the village of Shorewood, Will County, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning April 1st, 2020 and ending March 31st, 2021. Mr. Kulata, is the staff ready for that?
Yes, Mayor. Our Finance Director, Ann Burkholder, would be happy to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mayor. This is the second read of our appropriations ordinance. We, nothing has changed since our first read back in May. The total appropriation for the fiscal year is $61,782,304. And of course, that is an increase of 25% over our budgeted amount of just over $49 million. And we do that to account for anything unforeseen so that we would not have to amend this ordinance. But the budget figures do still serve as our operating guideline. So we would operate within the constraints of the budget unless something unforeseen happened. But I would be happy to take any questions on this.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the appropriations ordinance? Okay, I'll make, I'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing, being that there's no citizens here to make any statements.
Second.
Diane, roll call, please.
Luciano.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Debold.
Yes.
Kirkland.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
And Anderson.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. I'll open up the regular village board meeting for the village of Shorewood on June 9th in the year 2020. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Diane, roll call, please.
Mayor Chapman.
Here.
Dan Anderson. Dan?
I'm here, sorry.
Okay. Steve Brockman.
Here.
C.C. Debold.
Here.
Barb Kirkland.
Here.
Tony Luciano.
Here.
And Dan Warren.
Here.
Okay, let the record show there's a quorum. The regular village business can't be accomplished tonight. Are there any citizens that wish to address the village board? Any online? If not, I'm going to move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of approval of the regular meeting minutes from May the 26th, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes for May the 26th, approval of accounts payable in the amount of $6777.35. Number four, approval of a final payment in the amount of $21,428.81 to P.T. Farrel Construction for the Birch Drive drainage improvements. Number five, approval of a payment in the amount of $10,300 to RJ End Group for the 2020 sewer rehabilitation program. And number six, approval of a payment in the amount of $10,000 to Sickich for audit ending March 31st, 2020. Are there any items on tonight's consent agenda? A trustee has a question on. Are there any items that a trustee would like removed for further review? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Diane, roll call, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Kirkland.
Yes.
Debold.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
And Luciano.
Yes.
Consent agenda stands approved as presented. Move on. Any communications to the board, Diane?
Uh, no, there's not.
Okay. As far, I really don't have any report. I don't have any proclamation, but I would like to say a few things because this has been quite different times for all of us. Okay? First of all, two and a half months ago, we fell under a COVID-19 pandemic, which caused, as we all know, many changes throughout the world, not only just our country, but throughout the world. Caused economic slowdown that we haven't seen since 2008 and all kinds of people out of work, little hope in some countries, very little hope. Then, it was decided that we would get record rainfalls in the area, records three years in a row, a triple May rainfall throughout Shorewood and the farming communities, again, just taking people, putting them in some serious situations. Not only that, we get hit by a F-0, but very powerful tornado, especially when the ground is saturated and all the trees are loose to begin with. It just ripped things out of the ground, snapped them in half. Thank God, no one was killed during that event because of the destruction that I saw, not even a, not even a sliver in somebody's finger, maybe afterwards. So God really looked down on us that time. Then, we get riots in the streets all over the country, in some cases around the world. Okay? Now, thank God, we've got calm and peaceful demonstrations, okay? But it still doesn't take away, people have lost jobs, they've lost businesses, and the businesses themselves have lost customers. Now, it can be sad that the government printed, you know, about $5 trillion worth of paper and pumped it out into the economy, but still, that never does anybody that much good. It does, it's an instantaneous thing because inflation comes and follows that. And we're all going to be paying more for the groceries that we buy, the meat that we buy. So in the long run, everybody gets hurt. Okay? So it might seem like a good thing, well, they're actually making more money being that this hit. Yeah, in dollars. But if people remember Germany, it used to take a wheelbarrow full of marks to buy a loaf of bread. And when you get into a situation like that, people on fixed incomes are really going to be hurt by this. So what I'm getting at is that these last three months have been absolute hell on earth for many, many, many folks. It's been hell on earth for communities, first responders. But we're coming out of it. And this is my, end of my message. We're coming out of this. Shorewood's going to end up being stronger because I don't think we're going to have a business walk away from Shorewood. I know they've been closing down in Chicago, they've closed down in Joliet, but so far, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I haven't heard of any that said, "We're closing down in Shorewood and we're not coming back." So the tornado couldn't hurt us, the COVID-19, we didn't have personal injury from it, and we're going to come out of this strong or stronger than we were before. So the chief calls it the Shorewood bubble. I would call it the Shorewood trap. We trapped everything, kept it, killed it, and ate it, and we're coming back stronger than we were before. So, and then for eight, continue to practice social distancing so we don't turn this thing around. Continue wearing your masks or your face coverings when you're in the company of other people. Just do the common sense right thing. And I know there's a lot to be said about that, but please, just follow. Any comments on that? If, if not, I'm going to move on to the order of business for tonight. Business item number one, consideration for approval of an ordinance granting an amendment to the conditional use for a planned unit development at 102 West Jefferson Street, 150 Brook Forest Avenue in the village of Shorewood, Will County, Illinois. This is Anderson's Crossroads Plaza. This is up for first read. Trustee Brockman.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. At our last planning and zoning meeting, Dave Anderson came before us asking for amendments to the conditional use for a planned unit development, or anticipating putting a third building at the corner of 52 and 59, which we seen two or three years ago. We did hold a public hearing. No one spoke for against the project. Comes here with a 7-0 vote. I didn't hear, is Kelly on the line tonight? She, maybe she'd like to describe some of the conditions that we're, we're faced with on this project. Kelly, please.
Thank you, Trustee Brockman. So the reason for the PUD amendment is actually to kind of help close out and, and really be able to encourage the completion of this project. And it was originally, the redevelopment plan was first approved in 2011 and then was subsequently amended in 2015, 2017, and 2018. And so really, this is intended to memorialize some of the modifications that have occurred, as well as to provide a little bit more flexibility for the construction of the third building. And so the proposed amendment addresses some site plan modifications, some having to do with some particular materials that were originally required. It approves the basic architecture of Building 3, which was already done, but provides more flexible signage plans. It approves the landscape plan that needed to be modified because of some of the prior site plan modifications. It eliminates the previous requirement for pre-donation and then provides flexibility for staff level approvals with, for the minor changes or even modifications that result from I.DOT infrastructure projects. And so really, it's just kind of buttoning up the completion of this project. The one thing that was not discussed at PZP but has since been agreed upon by the owner is that the third building pad will be restored to grass if a building permit has not been submitted within two years. And so that's actually incorporated into the ordinance but was agreed upon after the meeting. And so I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
And the, the coroner is really up in the air because we don't know what I.DOT's going to do there, how much they're going to take. And so to put some expensive plantings along 52 or 59 is really needless right now. I mean, it's, we don't know how much they're going to take. So, or Anderson's don't know how much they're going to take. So if there's not any more questions or comments, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance granting amendment to the conditional use for a planned unit development of 102 West Jefferson and 150 Brook Forest in the village of Shorewood and waive the second read.
Second.
Diane, roll call, please.
Brockman.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Kirkland.
Yes.
Debold.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
And Luciano.
Yes.
Item number one stands approved.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, moving on to number two, consideration for waiving rent payments by the Shorewood Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Kulata.
Thank you, Mayor. As you just mentioned a few minutes ago, obviously, the pandemic has had a significant impact on our community and our business communities especially. So towards that end, what I am recommending at this time is that the village waive the rest of this year's monthly rent payments that the Chamber pays to the village. So that, that monthly amount is $534.28. So that the rest of the year would be the June through December payments totaling $3,739.96. One of the reasons for this recommendation is the fact that there's a, a good chance they won't be able to hold their large fundraiser this year, the Crossroads Festival, and that obviously impacts their ability to continue operations. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
When's the, when are they going to officially decide that? Do we know yet?
I, I haven't heard an official date. My understanding is they're going to have a board meeting this week, and I'm sure that'll be a topic they'll raise and, and perhaps they'll have a decision out of that meeting, but I'm not sure exactly when.
Okay, I was just curious.
I have a few questions. Why are you proposing this now? Did the Chamber come and ask for this, or is this just something you're doing on your own?
This is something after conversing with Carol Wagner about the, the Crossroads Festival and, and the impact of, of that may have on their, their budget. I offered this as a, something to possibly consider. The board would have to approve that, but she did say that something like this would help them continue to serve the business community.
I, I had a couple more things that I, I, one that you just answered for Dan, it hasn't been canceled yet, so you don't know for sure if it's going to be canceled. Next, has Joliet provided the Chamber any relief, being as their service area, they also service Joliet? Is it customary for the village to provide monies to other services, organizations in the village, like the Kiwanis Rotary and things like that? What losses will the Chamber have if the fest is canceled? Do we know that? Is there any Chamber, is the Chamber financially unable to make the rent payments at this time? Why would we not consider this until August rather than now? And are they receiving any, all their dues from their members? Why are they not considering, why are we not considering deferring the payments when this is pass, when this epidemic passed, rather than waiving them? I mean, it's customary, I think everybody that is a landlord now, what they're customarily doing is not forgetting the payments. They're deferring them till later when they're in better position. And that's a concern, some of the concerns I have. I have more, but I just wanted to relate some of that. One of the other things that I was concerned about is there a conflict of interest in this? About, you know, I don't know what the answers of this is, other than the fact that we're just, you know, trying to do something for the Chamber. And I don't know if that's absolutely necessary at this time, being that they probably are budgeted for the whole year. I don't know when their year ends. I don't know what their financial situation is, but it seems to me that this is something, after they decide if they're going to have the fest, that we could decide.
So regarding their specific financial condition right now, you know, I have had conversations about that. I don't know if, if I'm the appropriate person to speak to those. However, what they have shared with me leads me to believe that this is an issue, a significant issue for them. I think you, you know, we all can imagine that because businesses right now, some of which, you know, have just opened, paying membership dues to the Chamber is probably not on the top of their priorities or abilities at this time. So I think, you know, one of their other major sources of income is, has been significantly impacted because of the pandemic. You know, I'll also add that there, they have not been able to utilize Village Hall. They, they have weekly meetings, sometimes more often than that. So they weren't, were unable to use Village Hall while we were closed, you know, for over two months. And even now, because of the types of meetings that they'd hold, there are over 10 people, they're still not able to use the facility, even though now we are open. So it's for those reasons, you know, I believe that this, this is a, an appropriate move for the village to make to demonstrate support, not only for the village, but also, or for the Chamber, but also for businesses in our community.
What, what do you think the conflict of interest is?
Well, the conflict of interest is it's a private organization. And the other possibility is the fact that they operate under the purview of U.S. Chamber of Commerce, which is the largest lobbyist in the United States. And that could, could be construed as a political organization. So anything in kind that we were to give could possibly be considered a donation to a political organization. I just don't have all the facts, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Can, can Marin chime in and clarify any of that?
Sure. You know, hearing this for the first time, it's something that I could look into a little bit more. You know, I think there's an argument that could be made that because they haven't been able to actually use the Village Hall right now, that it would be in exchange for their lack of the ability to use the property at this time. But if there is a concern about the conflict of interest, I can certainly, we could table this, and I could look a little bit closer and talk with Dave Silverman about it, too. He is aware of it, and we talked about it this morning, and he didn't express a concern about a conflict.
Yeah, that's my, one of my concerns. And again, like, they're not going to decide, until they decide whether they're having the fest or not, I don't see any reason why we could do this the first read and just talk about it at the next meeting.
My, my understanding is that their, their tax status is, is not as a political organization. I believe it's, it's a not-for-profit.
Nonprofit, yeah.
Yes.
Again, like, as Carol said, she was checking into it. So again, I, I would prefer to wait, but, you know, it's up to the board what they want to do.
But in actuality, in all, in order to have the fest, we have to be in, what, phase four? Or six, seven? You know, five? So we actually have to be in, and that's not even expected until when? Do we know? Have a general idea of when?
Yeah.
You have to be.
The earliest, the earliest. Almost August.
Yeah, the earliest we could get into phase four is June 26th.
Right. So, and the, first week of August is the fest, right? Scheduled technically?
I, I believe so, yeah.
The first weekend in August, right?
Yeah.
I think what you need to do is make a whole list, then. If we're going to look at the conflict of interest, we got the Will County CED that we contribute to. We've got the, the IML that we contribute into. There's probably, if I could sit here and think long enough, we got about seven or eight organizations, including the, the Water Group that we contribute funds to. So we need to look at all those groups. And if, if the Chamber comes out to be a conflict of interest, I would imagine we could list all of those organizations that we need to pull out of.
I, I think what he's referencing is that we're taking money, we're not paying money. Like, the IML, Will County Government League, we're, we're making a contribution to those agencies, whereas I believe the question right now is simply, we're, we're taking rents from another organization.
Wouldn't it just be a matter of the landlord saying, "I'm going to waive your fees for the next six months"?
Still don't think it was, okay?
Pardon?
I don't think that was the question.
I'm concerned to say that there could be a conflict of us waiving the rents.
Yeah, but wouldn't it be as simple?
Because it's, it's an in-kind, it's the same thing as if I were to give you something. It's an in-kind contribution. It's considered a donation.
I just look at it as.
Like I said, if you.
Landlord doesn't want to charge.
Go ahead with it, fine. But I, at this point, figure that we can wait till our next meeting before we have to make a decision. It's up to what the board wants to do.
Yeah, we've got, we've, we've got a few organizations that fall under that same type of guideline. So we need to make sure we're not in conflict of interest with all those organizations, because if we are, then we got to pull out. Okay?
We, we will confirm with Attorney Silverman.
Yeah, Will County Government League, okay, that's another one.
Okay.
Motion to table?
If this is just the first read, I guess it's not really first read. It's not listed as a first read.
I'll make motion to table.
Second.
Diane, roll call, please.
Sorry. Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
No.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Debold?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And Luciano.
Yes.
Okay, item number two has been tabled for further review. Moving on to number three, consideration of an ordinance permitting the off-premise sale of alcoholic beverages at certain locations in the village and amending the Shorewood traffic code to conform with such permitted sales. This is up for a first read. Mr. Kulata.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a week ago, the governor signed new legislation that would allow for the sale of mixed drinks and cocktails for off-premise consumption. So despite this new law, the village would, and its liquor license holders would not be able to take advantage of this new opportunity without some changes to the village code. So what you have before you in, in this ordinance would formalize the, the sale of liquor to go, off-premise. And it is done so in a manner that is consistent with state law. It was drafted by Attorney Silverman. And what it would do, it would allow for these types of sales, subject to state law, for the following liquor license classifications: A, A1, B, B1, B2, and B3. There are certain stipulations in terms of how these beverages would need to be sealed and labeled, and those are called for not only in the law but also within this ordinance. It also would make some modifications to the Shorewood traffic. It also would make some modifications to the Shorewood traffic code, and it would be, it would allow for enforcement via our local ordinance, which is recommended not only by Chief Kleema, but also Attorney Silverman, to allow for the maximum flexibility when we're pursuing charges. So staff recommends adoption of this ordinance, so that our liquor license holders that meet the, this classification can take advantage of this opportunity to advance their business.
And this has a sunset date of June 2, 21, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Just, just a quick question. This is basically for most of the places that serve liquor. I'm looking on here, it lists a couple nail places. Is this saying that the nail places will be allowed to deliver mixed drinks to...
Are, are you looking at the list of all liquor licenses?
Yeah, that's, that's not applying to all these places. They're just listed, right?
Correct. Yeah, we just wanted to...
So it'd only be the places that normally would do this?
Correct.
That would take advantage of it?
Only, only those establishments with the listed A, A1, B, B1, B2, and B3 would be able to take advantage of the off-sale, or off-premise sale?
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see the classifications.
Yeah. I just wanted to provide in case there were specific questions.
Okay, good.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance permitting the off-site, off-premise sale on alcohol beverage at certain locations within the Village of the Village Shorewood and amending, and amending the Shorewood traffic code to conform with such permitted sales. Wave the second read, please.
Second.
Okay. Diane, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Debold?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And Luciano?
Yes.
Gen item number three stands approved. Moving on to number four. Discussion on IDOT's proposed design alternatives for U.S. 52 widening project, Mr. Kulata.
Thank you, Mayor. Just within the past few weeks, IDOT has reached out to the Village and proposed two alternative designs for some intersections here off of 52, specifically Summer Street and Picnic Street. So within your packet and also on the screen, you can see Alternative A. So this is a, an option that would allow for both Summer and Picnic Street to remain open, despite the widening of the roadway and installation of some pedestrian facilities there on the south side of 52. However, in this, this design scenario, there are four properties that would be displaced because of the widening and because of the significant grade separation that you see coming down from, from 52 onto these side streets. So that is Alternative A. Alternative B is an option that would basically close both Picnic and Summer, and it would install a concrete wall, which is, is kind of more or less that red line that you see that kind of goes across. And it would basically make those dead-end streets, they would be treated probably with a, a three-point turn area. We're guessing probably not a full cul-de-sac, given the limitations there. But what this option would do, in addition to closing the streets, is it would maintain those four homes that would be displaced by Alternative A. So this would, those four properties would be able to, to stay. They would be losing some of their property to a new right-of-way that IDOT will acquire. So there's, there are pros and cons to, to both of these options. However, what IDOT is looking for is some direction from the Village.
Do we, do we know if those four properties are owned, or if they're rented out?
We, we know one of them is...
Describe that, maybe?
Um, some are owned, some are rented.
Some are, okay.
Correct.
All right.
Yes. So IDOT is looking for feedback. They, they basically gave us a, a two-week window here, which would be, you know, this Friday would be the end of that window. So we're bringing it for you tonight. You know, the recommendation from staff is to go with Alternative A. There are several reasons why, you know, this is preferred. You know, there's, when you close off Summer and Picnic, you're, you're making it extremely difficult, one, for emergency response, okay, for those police and fire vehicles to get to those properties. So it adds significantly to the time, we believe. It also would make it harder to maintain. You know, just, just getting in and out with a snowplow truck would be a real challenge, and then other maintenance that would need to, to occur. And the other thing is, is that when we look at the, the plan that we have for the Tiff District, this is within the Tiff District, closing off those two roads would make it more difficult to redevelop the area. It would diminish access to the area. It would make it probably more difficult for a developer or someone to assemble the properties and to bring about additional development in the area. So for those reasons, we believe that Alternative A is the best approach and what we would recommend sharing with IDOT. I'm happy to, to take any questions you may have. We also have our, our new Public Works Director, Noriel Noriega is available on the phone, and I believe Brian Welch from Christopher Burke is available, too. I think Chief also spoke to this, as well as Kelly Crissy, our Economic Development Director.
I would agree with A myself.
Yeah, I, I think A falls, except it falls within the Ginkgo design that we approved not too long ago. And honestly, even on B, putting a U-turn lane on Route 52 just does not seem like a wise decision for us to adopt. So I, I would have to support the Alternative A method.
Hey, Jim, has there been any talk about closing Grove or DuPage, or, or both of them?
There has not been, I guess, a lot of discussion about doing that. I, I think there is an opportunity to consider that, since, you know, we own property on both sides, particularly at DuPage Street. We own property on both sides of that road. You know, there, there are some pros and cons to, to doing it, closing those as well. We don't believe that we would need to make any decision or recommendation specific to those streets at this time. But these are two alternatives that IDOT brought forward, you know, honestly, out of the blue. You know, because we, we really hadn't talked about that previously, and we've been in fairly constant contact with them.
Well, the only reason I say that, it would make more sense to be able to close those two roads, Grove and DuPage, because you're getting farther, getting farther away from 52 and 59 interchange than less, you know, turn abilities. And I, to me, it makes more sense, but, you know, I don't know what IDOT's has either.
I, I think the, the existing grade, you know, is, is so significant at Summer and Picnic, which is, you know, one of the reasons why they brought it about, you know, as, as consideration at this time. Obviously, the, the grade differential is not that great when you're looking at both Grove and DuPage as it is at Summer and Picnic.
Okay.
Does the, this drawing show that, that it would be impossible to access the building in the future?
Which building you're referring to?
The Shorewood Public Works Building.
Yeah, if you're, you're talking about the larger one, the old Fire Barn, yes, we, that will be displaced. You can see it, you know, the road improvements, you know, would, would cut into the building itself.
It would, okay.
Yes.
Because of the deadline, if somebody would propose a consensus vote, so we can have Mr. Kulata send a memo to IDOT to let them know which this board prefers.
Any other...
I'm fine with the, I'm fine with the A plan. Can you also just maybe suggest, I'd like a two-week turnaround when we suggest things to them?
We certainly can do that.
Right?
I'm fine with the A plan. I, I don't live in the area, maybe Cookie could give us a better read on it, but I'd go along with the A plan.
Well, I think the A plan is probably a, a better deal for the entire community.
Correct.
Not just for one or two streets. I think A is probably better.
Yeah, I'm okay with the A plan, too.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Of your direction. Okay, moving on to business item number five. Consideration for approval of a design contract with Tria Architecture for a public works facility. Mr. Kulata.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you recall, just a few weeks ago at the Committee of the Whole, the Board had, had asked staff to bring forth a contract with Tria that would get the design of this facility underway. So Attorney Silverman, myself, as well as Director Noriega have had extensive conversations with Tria. Jim Patracas, I believe he's on the call, and probably would be able to address specific questions as well. What I'll do is just quickly run through the scope of work here. Really, there's three phases that this agreement is speaking to. One is the designing, the bidding, and then, of course, construction observation. Now, it should be noted that both the bidding and the construction observation are things that would occur significantly into the future, okay? And it would only occur if the Board was at a point where it felt comfortable proceeding with actual construction. And there's a lot of things that we would talk about, particularly related to financing that, that would need to occur. And so at this point, staff is not suggesting we should, we establish a, a construction schedule right now. I think the, there's somewhat of financial uncertainties, given the pandemic, that making a significant decision about when to construct requires a little more time, so we can see how the revenues come in. However, the design itself is something that we did budget for. We have funds available for this purpose, and it puts us in a position to act when you're ready to act. So what, what this would do, it spells out the different design services that Tria will provide for the Village. And then it also identifies there are certain things that Tria's scope does not include. And there are certain elements of this that Village could perhaps take on some of the legwork and the coordination in a way that could be more financially beneficial for us to do, because of either the specific vendors that we've been using, you know, when it comes to things like telecommunications and IT, to security systems, fueling islands, you know, salt domes, things like that, that are outside the design scope. So I already spoke generally to, you know, the, the fact that there's funds budgeted for this purpose for the design this year. At the Committee of the Whole, you'll probably recall that there were some questions that, that some of you raised related to the design fee approach that Tria was making. At that time, they were looking for the, their compensation to be related to the cost of work, and it was 5.5%. We have continued to push that point with Tria, and they have come back with a lower amount. They're now offering 5.25%. And there was also a question about whether or not a lump sum not to exceed dollar amount would be an option. And it is an option, and, and what you see in the memo here is a lump sum fee of $575,000. So in order to determine which of those options is most beneficial, we had to, to look at a couple different project cost, you know, scenarios, okay? So for example, if it was a $10 million building, you'll see that the 5.25% design fee is actually a better deal for the Village. It would save us, you know, approximately $50,000. As you, you go higher with the cost, that, that changes, and it's not as beneficial. However, if you look at the total cost of an $11 million project, going with the lump sum would save you maybe $2,500. So from, from our perspective as staff, there's more at risk when you look at a lump Village will be, you know, actively involved in, in the design of this building from the standpoint of, of its scope and magnitude. And there could be opportunities for us to, to really bring that cost to, closer to the low end, as opposed to the higher end. So for that reason, the recommendation that we have would be to do, approve the design contract with the 5.25%. That gives us, I think, reduces our, our risk of overpaying. And the same scenario would actually apply to the, to the construction observation, okay? Same scenario where you have, it would be 2% of the, of the design cost, as opposed to the lump sum, which would have been $220,000. So in a very brief nutshell, that's kind of what this contract has. There's options for, for you to consider, whether or not you want to do the lump sum not to exceed dollar amount, or whether you want to do as a percentage of the design cost. And that's for both the, the design portion, as well as the construction observation portion. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
I just agree with you, Jim. I think the 5.25% is...
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's the better route for us to take on that. I think there's the, the more likelihood of, of the savings aspect there at the 5.25% option.
That's what you're recommending, the 5.2 option?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's the Board's, or I'm sorry, that's the staff's recommendation.
I agree.
A question on that, the 5.2, do you add the 2% for cost of work onto that later, or is that included in the 5.2?
No, that's, that's on top of, that's additional scope of work that would not occur until we're actually building.
Okay, so it would be 5.2 cost until we decide to build, be 2% more?
Correct. Because they would be, they wouldn't be providing that service until we're already constructing.
Right. No, I agree with you.
Trustee Anderson, you, you mentioned something up front. What was that? You disagreed, or did you agree?
No, I, no, I agree with the staff's recommendation at the 5.25%. I agree with that.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood what you said.
Okay.
I thought you... I'll make the motion, the Board approves the Tria contract with the design paid at 5.25% cost to work and 2% cost for construction observation.
Second.
Diane, roll call, please.
Anderson? Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And Debold?
Yes.
Gen item number five stands approved. We'll be moving on to number six. Consideration for approval of the annual appropriate, annual appropriations ordinance for the Village of Shorewood, Will County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning April 1, 2020, and ending March 31, 2021. This is the second read to send it south. Okay? If there are no...
I'm here, Mayor.
Anne, was that you?
Yes. Yeah, I'm here. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Well, nobody really had any questions during the previous meeting, so...
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual appropriation ordinance for the Village of Shorewood, Will County, Illinois, for the fiscal year April 1, 2020, ending March 31, 2021.
Second.
Diane, roll call, please. Diane, roll call, please.
Debold?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, appropriations ordinance stands approved. Moving on to number seven. Consideration of a resolution ratifying an energy supply agreement between the Village of Shorewood and AEP Energy Incorporated for the Village-owned streetlights. Ann?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to the electricity bid for our Waterwild earlier this year, this bid was, NYMAC bids the streetlights separately. Again, we were very pleased with the rate, and we will see a decrease from what we're paying currently. The three-year rate was very competitive, so we did select that three-year rate at just under 2.5 cents per kilowatt hour. That is down from the current rate of about 3.2 cents per kilowatt hour. NYMAC did follow up with us after I turned in this memo and let us know that this is the lowest bid price they've had for streetlights since they started bidding streetlights in 2011. So we, we are well-served by their effort.
Excellent.
Be happy to take any questions.
Great. I'll make the motion that the Village, Village of Shorewood approve the energy supply agreement with AEP Energy for the Village-owned streetlights.
Second.
Okay, Diane, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland? Debold?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And Luciano?
Yes.
Gen item number seven stands approved. Good, we'll move on to reports. Ian, how we've got you, Trustee Anderson, Public Works?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope, I keep dropping you, so sometimes I hear every other word, other times I hear everything, but Public Works is, our Public Works crews have returned to a full week of work now. They started back June 1st, so we got our four crews back in. They're continuing to work on storm, storm damage, the trees in, mainly around the Syle Road area. There were some trees, about 21 of them were removed. There's about five more that need to be addressed. There's also been some continued storm sewer jetting going on, addressing some possible flooding issues in the Windstone, Saddle Brook Estates, Ranchwood, South Raven, and Westshore and Garden Terrace areas. In a nutshell, that's about it, but everything's going on, and they're continuing to try to keep up with the grass mowing, but that's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Dan? Not Trustee Brockman, Planning and Zoning Commission?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting will be July 1st, a little bit early for an agenda as of right now, but July 1st will be our next meeting, and at our last meeting, besides the one agenda item we had on the docket tonight, we also discussed onsite truck repair. Continued the public hearing for one more month, and hopefully they can come in compliance another 30 days, so we continue the public hearing, and we're hoping for the best.
Okay.
And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Kirkland, Parks and Recreation?
Thank you. Tennis courts at Four Seasons and the disc golf course at Shorewood Park are now open. Please adhere to posted guidelines for use. Playgrounds, splash pads, and fitness equipment will remain closed for at least the remainder of Phase 3. The Summer Shorewood Connection is now available digitally. The information will continually be updated as we move through the reopen Illinois plan. Check back for new information on COVID-19 events and programming. The community-wide cleanup has been rescheduled for July 28th. We do have a couple upcoming events. Kite Fest, June 27th. Grab your kite and head outside. Let's flood the skies with kites from our own backyards. Tag @VillageOfShorewood on Facebook and @ShorewoodIL on Instagram in your photos for a chance to be featured in our stories that day. Children's fishing derby, June 26th through July 6th. We're gonna, we're gonna go virtual on this one. Fish from anywhere and send us photos of what you catch. For details on how to participate, visit our website. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Luciano, Citizens Advisory.
Citizens Advisory Committee is on break for the summer. We'll resume our meetings in September, hopefully. Again, anyone interested in getting involved, you can contact myself or any of the committee members through the emails on the village website. Thank you.
Okay. Entertained a motion for adjournment?
So moved?
Second.
Diane?
Sit, Warren? Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And Debold?
And adjourned.